Property that was sold at auction.
We have the address?
Yeah, do we have an actual description? So I can formalize, you know, I can formalize my motion with a proper law description.
Let me see if I have one. Yeah, I, cause I don't even know the buyer. The buyers need the real property, it check my complaint.
I think it's on or two.
It, um. I don't have a physical address for it, I have a legal description. Township thirty-nine south, range twenty east, section sixteen A B, tax lot forty-nine hundred, account number one four zero two one.
Okay. Alright, I'll amend my motion to have Paige Sully, our county legal counsel, move forward with the ejection process for the property of said description with account number one four zero two one. Is that correct Paige?
That is correct.
Okay, I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Paige, do we have to make an ordinance that it's not, no properties is sold without, with a squatter on it? Or do, can we just give Dave Knowles and Darwin direction?
You. A resolution, it's administrative act, ministerial, and this, and there's no sense going through the hoops of doing an ordinance, but I think you can just instruct them that this is, you know, the county's not signing anymore, you know, approving any more land sales. Because presumably, a resolution was brought to you authorizing this sale to this individual. That from now on, in the, in the resolutions authorizing the sale of these properties, you're gonna require them to include language that the properties are vacant.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Okay Paige.
Okay, I'll get working on it.
Was there anything else that we need to talk about?
Not, not, not today, not in this session, that's all my business right here.
Alright, well thank you.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We want to wait for Ann. We'll text Ann and then we'll just go ahead. Emerging, emerging opportunity program grant agreement.
That is this one, right?
Yes.
Okay, so background here is, this is a Business Oregon grant. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars dedicated to go towards North End Lakeview Water Project, which will help with costs for water and sewer hookup. The goal of, from Lakeview Cemetery out to the LDS church. And by approving this, that helps get this hundred percent grant approved.
Just for conversation piece, when do they, after we approve all this, when do we actually start breaking ground and get to work on this deal?
Still waiting for a contract between the town and the county. All of the paperwork is pretty much into the, both county and town now. Anderson Engineering has been completing all the permits, making sure that, you know, we have all the easements and whatnot in place. And as soon as we have a contract that both the town and the county can agree on, we'll put this project up a bit.
I'll be done. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the emerging opportunity program grant agreement with Business Oregon to Lake County.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? I would then thank you for taking the lead on this and Larry Holzgang for supporting us with Business Oregon and all the work that's been done.
Yeah, Larry Holzgang did very good work in helping Lake County.
Says project completion deadline for June thirtieth of next year. So that's ambitious and.
Well, I think we will be done by.
Yeah, I'm really hope, but, you know, clock's still going, so.
Alright.
No, thank you.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Commissioner, you're up again on the Christmas Valley broadband.
Okay, just to let folks know, Visor Corporation has received their funding for the ARDOF grant. And ARDOF stands for.
Rural Development.
Opportunity Fund. Okay, Rural Development Opportunity Fund. And what it is, is trying to provide broadband to all homes and businesses in rural locations. And they have an area, basically, pretty big area north of Lakeview. And they're gonna start in Christmas Valley, they've got seven years to implement. Still have a lot of questions with Visor. They were, you know, they're just getting started. It's interesting in the broadband business of what they can reveal and don't have to reveal. And, you know, there's a lot of competition right now in the broadband business. So we've been working on getting more and more information. Originally was going to come to you guys today to approve for purchasing to Condu and whatnot, but I don't feel that we're ready to make that kind of decision. Because we still have a lot of questions with the company and, you know, are we duplicating services? What is the quality of service we're gonna have? You know, what's the up speed, what's the down speed? Who are they getting their fiber from? You know, is it LS Networks, which is in Christmas Valley? Is it somebody else? And those are all kind of things that we need to better understand before we go forward investing in broadband for the county. So, got an excellent broadband committee that we put together. We had a great meeting yesterday and we continue to go through this path of trying to figure out what we got going on. On a different note, we, we, Clamath and Lake Counties have went together to, as well as SCOED, to get a contractor to do a feasibility study for Clamath and Lake Counties. And through some series of changes and whatnot, that person, that company is now called Stone Industries. And it's Crystal Stone out of Chillicothe, Oregon. She is very involved with trying to get broadband into Chillicothe and she has been very engaged in Lake County. We've been very pleased in the pace and scale of her capacity and her knowledge of broadband and whatnot. And feel very good about how they're gonna move forward. Originally was thought that we would only have two feasibility studies, one for Clamath and one for Lake County. But we've since changed that to five. So we're gonna have one for the community of Chillicothe, one for Clamath County, one for Lakeview, one for Christmas Valley, and one for Lake County. So this will still cover everyone, but it will maximize potential grant funding in the future. One thing that we're gonna probably, I've, I've reached out to Sharon Lighty, our grant writer, to see if she could possibly help out with that, I haven't heard her back from her yet, so.
So Sharon's had surgery, she's got an assistant helping her right now, so it might be.
Okay. I just love you now, I did not know that. We have a laundry list of when grants are due. There's multiple grants, but the key important ones are coming up here this fall. And Stone Industries, who's writing these feasibilities, will also be writing the grant, helping with grants. And we wanna make sure that we are maximizing our potential to receive grants. As she mentioned yesterday, it's a tough to get some of these grants. Like you may be in the top five or ten percent if you get awarded. But Lake County does favor well and because we are rural, we, you know, don't have a lot of broadband right now at all in our county. And so they are looking at counties like that to try to get the most. That's pretty much an update on the broadband. Not looking for any action or decision today. Guys, have any questions?
Oh, it's a good update. Yeah, glad you're getting good participation on the Visor today.
We're all learning and, and also, you know, we've got good people that are providing input too and asking a lot of good questions, so. But feel very good about Stone Industries right now.
It's great that Crystal's in there.
Yeah.
So our action consideration is.
Tape.
So the next thing is our budget resolutions to Ann, which I'm gonna come.
She was planning on it.
I checked.
She is.
There she is, speaking with Devon.
I didn't see my note and Dave Knowles was in there, so.
You literally walked in right on time.
Okay.
I was just getting ready, you say something really bad about you.
Well, you want me to step out? Okay, good morning.
Morning.
Couple of things before you today, the first one I thought, just to keep it in fiscal year order, you have a packet of twenty-one, twenty-two budget resolutions that helps a few funds and departments stay within budget authority till tomorrow. The first one is twenty-one, well, twenty-twenty-one dash twenty for the DA's department. I made an error on this one, just noticed it this morning. This is for materials and services expenses due to like victim service training and things like that. They get Victims of Crime Act revenue through the, it's a federal program, but it passes down through the state. Instead of seven hundred dollar increase, this needs to be one thousand two hundred and fifty. I, I just, I made a mistake. In fact, you can see it on the report, underlined with the details. I looked at the expense total instead of the category total, so I made an error on this one.
Okay, so just Voca needs an ex, we're just changing that allocation from seven hundred to one thousand two hundred and fifty?
Yes.
So that Voca has that extra?
Yeah, yeah, and the Voca, in fact, the Voca grant, we budgeted sixty thousand, it came in at sixty-four thousand five oh one. And it is a, it is a reimbursable grant, that's how that one works. So we spend it and we get it back. Yeah, I don't, if you want, I can go through each of these and you can approve them all at the end, or if you wanna do them one by one, it's up to you.
I think we have to do them one by one, don't we here?
I think paraphrase, she's just saying, she can go through, I'll give them a motion, move to the next one.
Or we just listen to all of it? Just listen to all of it? Either way. So Ann, just a quick question, you said it was sixty-four thousand, but your final adopted says sixty thousand seven hundred on the Voca.
Right, so it's actually gonna go, the final adopted on that's gonna go sixty-one two fifty. I don't have to do, they don't need authority beyond that.
Okay.
They just need that twelve fifty to get through tomorrow. The next one is twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one, this is for the Sheriff's Department. They needed more materials and services as well. They, you know, both fuel, vehicle maintenance, physicians, all kinds of things kind of have crept up on them throughout the course of the year. And so they had dollars available on their personnel services category. So this resolution reduces that category and increases their materials and services by five thousand dollars.
Okay, no questions?
The next one. The darn landfill. I mean, I'm hoping that this one sits pretty next year, we'll see. So this one, again, short on materials and services. Fuel, vehicle maintenance, contract services, that is a fuel result. So this one needs materials and services increase of five thousand dollars. But since there's nowhere else to go with appropriation authority here, they actually need a revenue transfer from general fund. Couple of things to talk about on this fund. That their revenues, their solid waste fees did not come in like they did in a couple of, you know, prior couple of years of full record keeping for us operating the landfill. It seems to me that there's differences in construction activity and that's it. Like more, more of it right now is just household and just general contractor work, not, not the larger scale construction. I don't know how to explain it.
I know that when Airport Solar was here, they were taking a lot of stuff to landfill when they were here.
So the prior two years, we were actually right around that four hundred and ninety-five thousand, you know, range for solid waste fees. This year you can see, when we've got a few dollars in since I printed this report last week, but it's, it's, you know, four sixty-five, it's short. So that's where this fund is at. You know, in talking with Dave, there were significant vehicle maintenance issues that I think they're on top of now. I don't think we're gonna see that next year. We did increase budgets for contract services and fuel for next year. With where we're at, that's kind of more of a known. So hopefully, this fund stays in better shape next year.
Yeah, cause we virtually worked on every piece of equipment they had out there.
Significant repairs, so almost every piece of equipment, I guess.
So a quick question on this, real quick Ann. Why am I seeing general fund increase five thousand as well as contract services increase by five thousand?
Because the general fund increases the revenue side to balance the expenditure side.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So we need, we need the authority in the expenditure side. But there's, there's nowhere, there's nowhere to go or to keep the budget in balance other than increase revenues as well.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. The last one, twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-three is for the Veterans Services Fund. She had significant office supplies, which I believe was like furniture upgrades and updates in her office. And then training, I think was more expensive than she had anticipated in promotional materials. So she needs about three thousand dollars in materials and services increase. The good news with this one is the Veterans reimbursement from the state, which is funded through lottery dollars, was higher than we'd anticipated for our budget. So we planned seventy-two thousand dollars from state funding, we actually received eighty-three thousand. She doesn't need all of that for appropriations, she just needs some to get through tomorrow. So that, this one increases three thousand dollars on materials and services and then that state revenue amount.
Alright. Do we have motion numbers?
Do we wanna go through those one by one and approve them?
Do they need to be one by one, or can we approve twenty-one, twenty-two budget resolutions?
I'd slate.
Okay.
Alright, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty to direct the DA's department, one oh one, one oh six, Federal Resources Increase, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in materials and services increase, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one, directed that the Sheriff's Department Fund one oh one dash one twenty, Personnel Services Decrease five thousand dollars and Materials and Services Increase five thousand dollars. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two to hereby direct the landfill to twenty-four Materials and Services Increase by five thousand dollars and General Fund Transfer Revenue Increases by five thousand dollars.
I'll say.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's your turn.
Oh, the Veterans one?
Okay.
Alright, I got it. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-three and hereby direct the Veterans Services two forty, State Revenue Increase by three thousand dollars and Materials and Services Increase by three thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
I'll go ahead with it.
Thank you. Now for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. To start, there is a page in your packet that talks about a few budget changes that have been requested by managers or with new information since we had our budget meetings. If you wanna look at that list, I'll go by and go through one at a time. The first one is in the Courthouse Department, Janitorial Service, well, Supplies, this is Janitorial Supplies. Inflation caught this category or this line item, and so there is a request to increase that five thousand. What I've done is I said like a line item, but then there's a category total out to the side there. So that means that Materials and Services for one oh one, one oh five increased to one hundred and forty-four thousand. The next one is in our fleet, our vehicle fleet. The eighty thousand dollar vehicle purchase couldn't happen this fiscal year, it's not built yet. So we need to move that appropriation into next fiscal year. So it looks like maybe there will be, does that mean, there's three? Three vehicles will be purchased next year, so that new category total is two hundred and eighteen thousand forty-five. The next change there is the railroad legal fees and possible settlement. So it increases Materials and Services significantly. Goes to a new category total of five hundred and eighty-four thousand for Materials and Services within the railroad fund. When we budgeted this fiscal year, the twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a significant amount in contingency in this event. There's a couple of events coming up that we, that we knew we better have some dollars in contingency under different scenarios. So to make this work, we've reduced general fund contingency by five hundred thousand and then increase the local assistance fund revenue by a hundred and sixty thousand. Remember I? I kind of hedged the local assistance fund, not knowing what would happen with that. So I think we have room to increase that, to make all of this work. For right, for right now, that's my best suggestion. There's other, there's other ways to do this, but for simplicity's sake, I thought this was a good strategy.
So I have, under the new category total, I'm seeing nine hundred and seventy-six thousand?
Okay, so that's specifically for the transfer from general fund. We had budgeted a four hundred thousand dollar match for the Connect Oregon Grant.
Okay, gotcha.
So not only are you gonna match the Connect Oregon Grant in the railroad fund, but we also need to help with some of the, the legal fees and costs associated with the railroad.
Okay, and that is coming to the five hundred and eighty-four thousand?
Yeah, we already had budgeted some dollars there. But the new, the new category for Materials and Services in the railroad fund will be that, five eighty-four.
So what does that leave us in our contingency?
So that leads contingency at four forty-two, four forty-six. Okay, and there's one more, one more change for twenty-two, twenty-three, and that's in the landfill. There was a personnel addition. So within that fund, there were reserves and capital. So instead of increasing overall expenditures, doesn't make sense for the landfill to have reserves right now. They can't, they can't fund their operations as it is, let alone set aside dollars for the future. And so if, if there's a significant need in the landfill, it's gonna come from general fund, as we've seen anyway. So instead of budgeting that reserve, let that go towards operations. And then because there was some equipment that was discussed, I don't think that equipment's going to be purchased now, that capital can go down as well to fund personnel. So basically, you have four different changes there. If you agree that these changes should occur in twenty-two, twenty-three, your resolution is good to go. If you'd like to see something different in these budget changes, I can make adjustments to the resolution to include that. Or if you have other changes that you know of that I have missed. There's always a lot of moving parts. And so these were the things that people had told me about, that I knew that were on my radar. As far as the ARP dollars, those are accounted for. You know, I double-checked that both Lythicum, Reski, and Vicky Breeze Iverson dollars are all there. And then the federal side is there too.
So on the litigation part, we kind of need that right away so we can put that behind us, correct?
We still haven't officially gotten the bill. So with contingency at four forty-two, four forty-six, we're still in union negotiations.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the plan, is to use the contingency to uncover. Could you run through the landfill change one more time maybe?
Yeah, so in the, in the budget that was approved in, was that May, April? There was a forty thousand dollar reserve set aside for future equipment purchases. And that's just, they just can't, to be honest, they can't afford that right now. You know, if they need to make a significant, whether it's a facility improvement, whatever capital outlay they're looking at. whatever capital outlay they're looking at, their funds can't cover it. So they're gonna come to general fund anyway.
Yeah, it's gonna come out of the general fund no matter what.
Yeah. So instead of socking dollars away in that fund that they can't, they basically can't fund with their revenues anyway, let's, let's clear that out as a budget aspect and, and move it into personnel because of additional staff. Then to get the, the rest of the dollars, there was, I believe, yeah, a sixty thousand dollar capital purchase that was budgeted there. So there's a hundred thousand dollars in that landfill budget for reserves and capital. We're saying, okay, can't, can't, let's, since we chose to do staff, let's reduce that reserve and reduce a little bit of capital because now we're gonna have additional staff.
Okay.
The landfill budget next year, if, this is off the top of my head, but I think to balance this with these dollars, um, budgeted, it did increase general fund's contribution. You know, we just looked at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for this fiscal year for general fund. We just approved that. Next year, I think that budget's closer to three hundred thousand for the landfill. So it's an ex, it's, as you guys know, it, it, um, it just takes a lot to get that to operate. In our revenues, we just don't have the volume. We don't have solid waste volume like some of these other counties do that have better, well, not, they have more population, more construction going on, more things like that that share that, spread that cost out. We, uh, we have small volumes.
Yeah. But we're also wondering on tonnage that we can put in there about being.
Yeah, it's a double-edged sword, for sure. Yeah, if we go over certain amounts of volumes, then we're, um, subject to different UQ requirements on, well, how we dispose.
Man, that's a big topic. You got a lot of thoughts.
It's a.
But I, I won't discuss it now, right now. Yeah, I.
We don't wanna go down in the dome on this, okay.
But it, it's just, you know, there, there's a.
Landfills are big expense for the county.
There's a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, not necessarily wanting more opportunity when it comes to a landfill and a bigger landfill in the future. So, um, but nobody wants to hold their garbage to, to Shute County necessarily either. So, so all that opportunity and trying to do what's best when you have all the facts. All right, I'll leave, leave it be at that. All right.
So if those changes are acceptable, then the resolution can stay as is? Or, or we, by consent, like, are, how we really changes?
Well, I mean, there's a whole lot we can do about it. That's my deal. I mean.
Well, I, I like what you're saying about the reserves not really making sense within the landfill right now because it's still heavily dependent on the general fund anyway. So there's not much point in trying to store dollars away there. So I'm, and, and regards to railroad legal fees, vehicle purchases, everything, it's, no, I, I'm comfortable with the resolution.
On, on, to kind of remove the dark cloud, next year, we might not have five hundred and eighty-four thousand in litigation.
I mean, we better not.
Appreciate that, too. We were just gonna say legal fees, so, yeah, just stick with that.
So Anne, we've got two resolutions in front of us there.
Yes, yeah, so the, this, this first one, twenty-two dash oh-three, does four things that is required by budget law. Number one, you adopt the budget in totality, seventy million, eight hundred thirty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars. We want to do this after. Okay. The next one is you, we, we make appropriations by general fund, department, and category, and then by fund and category. We also impose the tax for, uh, our assessor at three point seven six one nine per a thousand of assessed value. And then the last thing this resolution does is it categorizes it. Due to Oregon property tax law, there's a general government limitation, and then there's an education limitation. So we tell the assessor that this is for the general government limitation. And that concludes your twenty-two, twenty-three budget build process.
So what is twenty-two, twenty-two dash zero four?
That is a, uh, GASV requirement and audit requirement to try to standardize across the nation how governments set aside dollars and what, what's available and what's not. So this commits fund balances. Um, special revenue funds are supposed to be there by legislative action. If we have a special revenue fund that doesn't have some kind of law behind why it's there, then we, through this process, say we're committing these dollars outside of general funds for some specific purposes. So we have the museum fund that sits out there, the landfill, the roundup, and then our business loan program. All of those, we say are special revenue funds, but there's no legislative rule that requires them to be outside of our general fund. Then it also goes into, uh, what dollars we spend first. So we spend restricted dollars first, uh, which are grand dollars or things of that nature. And then lastly, we spend, um, general purpose or unrestricted dollars. So it's, that's kind of a housekeeping resolution that we're hard to do every year.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion then to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero three in adopting the budget of fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three in the total amount of seventy million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars. And making appropriations, making all the appropriations presented and be it further resolved, the following ad lorum taxes are hereby imposed upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district for the said tax year at a rate of three dollars, seventy-six, nineteen cents per one thousand of assessed value for permanent tax rate. All right.
I'll second. Motion been made and seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four as presented, which, uh, reserves the authority to establish and modify commitments with any kind of.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Thanks for making it easy.
Yes, easy to spend money.
Is Georgia good?
Yeah.
Dave, here you go, Dave. All right. Drum roll, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Stay up front, Georgia, come here. The lady of the hour. Quit hiding.
Hooray, she's gone.
Georgia's been for the county for thirty-two years. She started in October fifteenth, nineteen ninety-two.
Nineteen ninety?
Nineteen ninety, yeah. And she went through Gary Park, Phil Israel, Flora Reader, and she got fed up with me and was quitting, so. She can't train me.
He was the best one.
Things are going well.
Anyway, so this is from the county for you and, uh, that, we got.
Whoa, I can knock somebody out with this.
We got a card here for you, and it's been around the building a lot. And, uh, I didn't wanna be the assessor and, uh, didn't know how to be an assessor cuz I've been an appraiser and didn't do any of that kind of stuff. And, uh, so with that being said, George kind of spoon-fed me for years how to do my job. And, uh, I'm very grateful for that. I couldn't have done it without her. And, uh, she's had a lot of experience and, uh, she's taught me that no matter why I screw up, she can fix it. And she proved herself just last week.
And now Jody will be fixing it.
Yeah, so, anyway, uh.
We wrote a procedure manual, so it's step-by-step instructions on how to do stuff, so. You will be well taken care of.
What's nice is Georgia's not leaving, and she's only a phone call away, and she's also gonna be our, uh, tax season helper. She qualified for that, and she can answer the phone and open envelopes. But, uh, anyway, George, uh, thank you so much for getting Jody up to speed and helping us so much all the way through and, uh, you know, for your years of dedication. Long before I was here, I was still selling a lot of parts. When I sold a lot of parts, she used to help me with my tax problems and, uh.
Well, I only do that for my favorite.
Anyway, so from the commissioners, from everybody, you know, where they all went, there they are. Anyway, thank you so much for your years of service, and we've got some cake and stuff. Um, we're not done with yet. We're having a office barbecue at my house, um, later in July and, and, uh, put a bow on this box. Anyway.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave's a great boss.
I'm trying to get Pam here, and I'm not sure what happened to Pam.
Commissioner picture.
But, uh, she didn't make it.
She's probably, uh, well, she has a grand new, a brand-new grandbaby, so she's probably important.
She was working yesterday, though, so.
Yeah, she's like, we can't stop.
Well, one of the people in your car said, wait at least a week before you start your next job.
Sunday.
So, anyway, who's, uh, gotten the cake and?
Gonna get a photo first.
Uh-oh.
I think there's someone online that might want to see something.
Is he online?
He's online.
He?
Who's a he?
Well.
All the he's in my.
Look at that screen right there.
Yeah.
And.
Oh, is it Phil?
The technology works.
Where's he at?
Hello?
Hello there. Georgia, you, yeah, it's, uh, it's time to celebrate, Georgia. You're, you're on the retirement.
I suppose. It wasn't planned for a couple more years, but, you know, when I was so sick.
Well, I fear maybe you might fill in a little.
Yeah. Yeah, they can get rid of me, you know. But, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I kind of know something after thirty-two years, so I'm gonna come back and get them through this next tax season.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
But it's gonna cost them dearly to bring me back.
Well, that's good, that's good. You, you, you bet, you have them under your, your, uh, control in that sense, I guess.
Yeah.
I just wanted to tell you that I really appreciated your dedication, your competency, and your reliability. There were times when you were at work where, uh, you shouldn't be at home in bed, you know, after surgeries and that sort of thing, and, you know, could always count on you and, uh, you deserve a happy retirement.
Well, thank you. So, yeah, I, I don't know what to say cuz I didn't want, want any of this. For the first time in my life, you know, I've been blessed with the gift of gab and don't know what to say.
Well, we appreciate you, and, and we're just celebrating your career, so.
Yeah, it's like, they're, they're excited I'm leaving, they're saying, hooray!
You will be missed.
Well, I'm just, like I said, I'm just a phone call away. And, um, I have a procedure manual at my house so that I can look up and walk them through, okay, this screen, this screen, this, like here, whatever. So, uh, we'll get them through it. They won't, the commissioners will think that there has been nothing changed over there. We'll, we'll make everybody look good.
That's what you do.
They'll think that we know what we're doing. The commissioners will think we know what we're doing.
You can't make Dave look good.
Well, if anybody can make Dave look good, it's Georgia. As good as he gets.
It's been, uh, I love my job, and I really like my boss. He's a, he's a pretty cool boss. And I'm only gonna say that once, so, uh, so you better listen the first time. And, uh, cuz I don't wanna have to put butter on your ears to get you out the door. So, um, he's, he's been awesome to work with. Jody, I, I feel comfortable leaving knowing that Jody is going to take over, and she's awesome, she's good with numbers. I hate numbers, I don't know why they stick in my head, but I don't know why we were good at that. But that, we have, Dave has a really good team there. And I felt comfortable knowing that I'm laying behind that, you know, the people that I trust, that I totally trust, um, Jody to carry on all those numbers. Cuz there's a lot to that job. You know, we wear a hat that spins because most counties have individual people. Somebody do personal property, somebody do taxes, somebody do foreclosure, somebody do mall home. We do it all.
We got Georgia.
And, but, but I can tell you, they need raises.
Was that?
Get your picture first.
Get your picture, get up there, Dave.
That was too.
You guys should be up there.
Georgia, I just wanna say real quick, I, I didn't, I'd never met you prior to really coming here to the county, and I just wanna say how much I appreciated getting to know you and having you here has just been an absolute blast. And just the conversation. Oh, absolutely, I mean, every time I go over there, you tell me you're a Marine and you threaten to kick my butt. I, uh, I just, I've always, I just feel that.
Well, I'm not the Marine, I was raised by, and raised to Marines, so.
I just wanna say, I, we all feel very blessed to have had you.
Thank you, James.